Here we go.
All right.
Let's see if we're on green.
Are we good? Okay.
She's checking, but I think we're okay.
Good evening. I'd call the meeting to order. It is 7:30. If everyone please stand for pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get going, I'd like to tell everyone, please silence your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We have a number of future meetings coming up. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, May 21st at 7:30 at Town Office. Planning Commission meeting we have at Tuesday, May 28th, again at 7:30 at Town Office. And lastly, our next town council meeting will be Monday, June 23rd, I'm sorry, June 3rd, 2019, 7:30 at Town Office. Next item on meeting items, we need to approve the minutes from the April 1st and the April 15th, 2019 meetings. Any corrections? I guess we want to do, probably should do these separate. So I'd love to take a look at the April 1st meeting first. Commissioner Buckman, Commissioner Ritz, any corrections?
I had no corrections.
All right. Technically, I'm not really sure if we have a quorum right now. Oh, first, I should state, Commissioner Sweeney will be absent tonight, and Commissioner O'Donnell will be late tonight, so. Okay, three out of five, that's true. Okay, all right, so do we have a motion to approve the April 1st?
I'll make a motion to accept the April 1st town meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved, three to zero. All right, please take a look at the... Sorry, April 15th town meeting, this was our first budget meeting basically we had. Any corrections to this minutes?
I had no corrections to the April 15th minutes.
Okay, any corrections, Commissioner Buckman?
No, it's good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the April 15th minutes as presented.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the April 15th town minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Nay. Aye. Okay, so approved, three to zero. Police report. Deputy?
Good evening, all. Deputy Whitehouse with the Frederick County Sheriff's Office. This is the April 2019 police report. That'll be pretty quick and easy. Suspicious activities were eight, which is good, people are calling in, so we like that. Quite a few 911s, 12, that's actually pretty high for the month. Proactive enforcements, we're out walking quite a bit, doing a lot of patrol checks. There's no bike patrols yet, but we will be getting the bikes looked at this month sometime, and they will be getting serviced, so we will be out on those soon as they're ready to go, as soon as we get word that they're okay to use, so. The traffic stops, traffic stats, 166 stops, which is 500 for the year, which is pretty high. Citations, you could see, 91, 180 warnings. The arrests, we had eight traffic arrests and three warrants for the month. There's several special assignments that I attended there with the Easter egg hunts in the park, the town meeting, and we had two pilgrimages, two pilgrimage that I had to handle for that, and we also did a crosswalk count at the request of the SRO, see how many students are crossing in the PM times there at Main Street and St. Joseph's and South Seaton and Lincoln Avenues. Additional information on the bottom, there were 11 total arrests for the month. We also assisted patrol with several calls outside of town and took reports for them as well. Narcotics Task Force actually served a search and seizure warrant on DePaul Street. Some charges will be forthcoming for the person that was a target in that case. And like I said, the bikes will be getting serviced, and we did several of the safety checks at Mother Seaton School and the Emmitsburg Elementary School, so. That was quick and easy, quick and fast, but is there any questions at this point for me?
Commissioners?
Concerns or anything?
What was the nature of all the 911 calls? Was it accidental dials at the?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, there were still some out here at the Daughters of Charity, and then just some random ones around town, pocket dials, whatnot, so, yeah.
I just have one item. I understand the carnival's coming to town here pretty soon. I imagine you guys have ever been contacted about extra shifts and everything else for that week?
Yep, we'll be here. As, I think we'll be here every, both of us will be here for, I think, five of the seven days in the evening, and, but one of us will be present for every day of the carnival, up till it's shutdown time.
I know your presence is very much appreciated for that week.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. All right, Mr. Ritz, anything?
I'm good.
No? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving along. Town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for March of 2019. I will highlight some of the pertinent areas related to streets, staff cold patched potholes around town. We repaired a welcome to Emmitsburg sign on South Seaton Avenue, repaired several parking meters. Staff installed the new electric vehicle charging station signs at the rear of the parking lot, and they conducted their monthly street sweeping on East and West Main Street. In the parks, they conducted monthly park maintenance checks, they checked the cameras, dogway stations and trash cans several days a week. Staff seeded and mulched the area in Memorial Park where trees were removed. Repaired the fence posts in Ball Field Number One parking lot. Staff repaired dugout bench at Ball Field Number Seven. Repaired a brace on the dugout pole at Ball Field Number Six. Staff repaired the bathrooms for the summer season, cleaned and stocked. And Commissioner Sweeney at the last meeting asked about the bathrooms. Staff does open and unlock the bathrooms Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, and then on the weekends, the bathrooms are unlocked if the pavilions are rented or reserved. And then staff prepared the Little League concession stand in Memorial Park for the season. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spill level of 16.6 feet. The wells, well number three, four, and five are still shut off to allow less gallons per minute through the plant. We produced an average of approximately 238,306 gallons per day and consumed 220,296 gallons per day, meaning the difference is backwash water is down to 7.8%. We purchased 470,100 gallons from the Mount this past month, or it would have been March, excuse me. Wastewater received 4.3 inches of precipitation in the month of March. We had, we currently have a surplus of 12.04 inches over the last six months, October 1st through March 31st. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 980,000 gallons per day, consumed 220,296 gallons per day, which means that 77.5% of the wastewater treated that month was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity six times in March. One noted item is trash pickup remains Mondays in the month of May, except for Memorial Day. Trash will be picked up on Tuesday, May 29th. You'll see the highlighted meetings that I had in the month of March. Some noteworthy items, staff upgraded some water meters, we conducted monthly maintenance checks on equipment and fire extinguishers, did some painting in the community center per the county request. The LG Sonic algae control system was installed on April 12th. I had two things real quick. I know at the last meeting, there was questions if we had any information on how the relining was working. It is very short in, it was just conducted in, I believe, March, February, March, March. But looking at the data we have right now, just one highlighted area, in January, it's on January 19th, we received two inches of rain. The following days after that rain, at the wastewater treatment plant, we processed a flow upwards of 2.2 million gallons. On the second day, we processed approximately 2.3 million gallons. On April 19th, about three months later, we had two inches of rain. On the days following, we processed only 1.5 million, and then the day after that was about 1 million. So we're seeing a reduction in the flows. Like I said, it's too early to get a whole lot of data, but that's a good sign that it is working, and if we continue to make these improvements, I think we'll see a lot of change. And then finally, that rain this weekend was a lot. So unfortunately, we received, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we received 4.3 inches of rain, and we processed over 6 million gallons in three days. The pumping station flooded, the Muffy Monster, which kind of breaks everything up, broke down because one of the pumps failed. Everything is now in operation. They're still pumping down the wet well at the pump station, but it was a difficult week again for staff. They probably much worked around the clock. And that's the manager's report for March.
Questions?
Any questions?
After, after all of that drama with the water, someone sent me a picture of the big hole in the dog park.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Do we have a single?
No, no, a dog dug through the fence by the watering hole.
Okay. I will pass that along.
He was the diggingest dog.
Where's the owner?
I, no one sent the picture, the picture of the owner, they just, they were like, "Look at this."
Okay, I'll let staff know.
I mean, the owner had to have known, right? That was a big hole.
I would think so.
Yeah, it didn't happen.
Commissioner Ritz?
We don't have cameras over there, do we?
We have cameras in the park, but not in the dog park.
Okay.
Yet.
Right.
Did you say yet?
In the park, but not pointed at the dog park.
Okay, thanks.
We need oscillating.
Yes. They change periodically.
I just have one item, I'd just like to say, thanks for responding back to my question concerning the town trail that's paved, and then basically the flooding is occurring. I can't even been over the last couple of days, I can't imagine what it's like right now, but having ridden that path many times over the last decade, it definitely seems to be getting kind of worse in that one corner, it's kind of dipping down, and Mayor, I'd see you on this, and at some point, I know you talked about possible drainage going underneath the trail or some of this nature to try to drain the water out of that area.
Right, right now, it's just gravel that it's using as filter. What ideally it needs is a drainage pipe. We're going to look at getting prices to see how much that is, and depending on what the cost comes back with, we can either pay it in-house or possibly submit for a park grant, and I think a new one comes open in August.
Okay. I know Commissioner Sweeney brought it up, but having ridden my bike over spring break, I was like, it's getting counted in train towns, so. Any questions, Mayor?
Very good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on, town planners' report.
Okay, I have, I spoke with Zach on some of the airs he just wanted me to highlight in his planner's report, so I'll go through that just real quick. He created, which I think he presented at the last town meeting or the prior town meeting, he created a fact sheet for the proposed cross-connection control program ordinance. That is taking up a lot of time. I think a lot of these residents are getting their permits in and getting the work done. We appreciate that. The bridge work, he's been working with Maloney Construction on an erosion and sediment control. We applied for an erosion and sediment control permit from Frederick County for the town stockyard pile, or the stockpile. Maloney was given permission to store dirt and debris from the bridge project in our stockpile. However unfortunate, they put too much back there, and then the county was not happy with the way that it was being stored and required them to implement some erosion and sediment control program, or processes, and then the town had to apply for a permit to store back there. Maloney no longer has permission to store back in the stockyard pile, actually, nobody has permission any longer. Community legacy, he processed the quarterly report for the FY 2017 facade grant, and he processed the quarterly report for the 2017 square and sidewalk revitalization grant. For MS4, he received notification the town was rewarded $3,000, awarded $3,000 from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to start a storm drain marking program, which gives us credit towards our MS4 permit. He processed the bid documents for the 2019 MS4 projects, processed and approved zoning applications for a new roof, a fence, and a new home in Emmett Gardens. Miscellaneous, received notification the town was awarded $5,000 from Keep American Beautiful in order to purchase recycling bins for our parks, and he prepared the RFP for the 2019 forest plan implementation, the Stand 5 timber marking.
Questions?
Where's, where's the new home going in Emmett Gardens?
I think it's Second Avenue.
Second Avenue.
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
There's a lot of, by Habitat.
Empty lot.
That one, okay. Now I can see it now.
A couple lots are up the middle. All right, any other questions? No? Moving on to Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Ritz? Anything tonight?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Commissioner Buckman?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I actually, thanks to the, what is it, the American Legion for the Easter egg hunt that they scheduled and then rescheduled, and I know they put tremendous amount of hours into that, but the ground was too wet, so stay tuned next year.
All right. I just have two comments I'd like to make. I'd like to congratulate the Mount St. Mary's graduates, go out and accomplish great things, and also I'd like to congratulate Catoctin High School graduates, I understand you have one, right? Oh, no, no, she said.
She said TJ.
TJ, that's right, she transferred, okay, TJ. Commissioner O'Donnell, I know he has a graduate coming up here in a couple of weeks, so I don't know if that was him coming through the door or not, so I'll just say that upfront. Congratulations to Commissioner O'Donnell. Mayor's comments?
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Just a couple of things here, it was, April was a very busy month. Attended the opening of the Frederick County Fire Museum right here in Emmitsburg. We're pleased to have that here, and we're going to keep it here. There, we are going to have the William Cochran glass etching that'll be installed probably in June on the property. It's a very expensive, wonderful tribute to the fire community to have that up here. Attended the planning meeting, open meeting for sign ordinance for Village Zone, we had an extra meeting conducted for that, well attended. If anything, the sign orders lifted up, and we had a lot of community activity and presentations, and it was a wonderful event to have. Attended the Mount St. Mary's Athletic Committee, I'm a member there, they're really putting an accent on academics. A lot of the institutions, colleges, who's are losing that with their athletic programs, with the Mount is putting that accent and keeping it there. Welcome the University of Maryland graduate students, we had 20 of them that came up to see our innovative water systems, and that was a wonderful thing. We had their Arbor Day tree planting, we had commissioners there, it was a wonderful, wonderful outing, and we, again, we did win, not win, we were awarded the Tree City.
Excellent, yeah.
Tree City.
Very nice.
I don't think you see, we put that out.
We put it on the signs I saw on the way into town.
Yeah, we put it on two signs in town, and we went to our staff, really worked hard on this, our town clerk and everybody, Ms. Shaw, pitched in that Green Team, we had great participation on that. Let's see, this last Monday, I attended the County Executive Gardener's Public Information Briefing. She announced the community partnership awards, grant awards, and after two and a half years of work, a lot of people, Boys and Girls Club is coming to Emmitsburg. We've got, they've got, received a $110,000 grant through the county FY budget, and it's very special, we'll have an after-school program. We've conducted one here at the town, and we will have to give, we'll give a special tribute to those that are retiring from that, but this is smaller, this can be about 40 children, and a lot of hard work went in that, it's staff work, and it's really a wonderful program that they're going to conduct here in town. Green Team meeting, we had Jean, Jenny Willoughby, Sustainable Hill Manager with the city of Frederick, she was up to be our guest speaker, and she's also in the same class I am, it'll climate change, I'll be going there tomorrow morning, and the next day, two more days of that, it's kind of rigorous exams on that, it's very special, but it's a very topical item being met with playground specialists. We have a, we're going for grants, we have about $300,000 worth of equipment, we're trying to put in there to make it an all-inclusive playground, and we didn't get one of our grants, so I've reached out to our EBPA to help us out, and we'll ask anybody else if they'd like to donate some money to help us push this thing over the line, but we've received grants, one of, the main one is 120,000 from Maryland Program Open Space, and that's very special. This Saturday, I attended the Welcome Home, Seaton Center was a speaker there, and it was very, a very special event, 50 years of service to our community, it's outstanding. I forgot to mention that on May 1st, I was a presenter and a panelist with the Green Neighborhood Festival, which is in the fourth year in Frederick City, along with County Executive Gardener Frederick Mayor O'Connor, and Kai Hagan, and the mayor of Myersville. Last thing, I, we have a dear friend who is very ill at this time, he's been a great friend of the town of Emmitsburg, and worked with the Mount for many years, and helped coordinate and mesh, mesh that relationship, and we just hope, Joe Leopards, we give our prayers, and we hope the very best for him, a very, very wonderful person who's served our northern Frederick County, and hope everything will be okay with him. But the last, that final thing would just be the facade grants, $880,000 worth of grants have gone from this program, the matching grants, and they've been more, they're putting more in, and I think so many buildings are improved, properties are being improved under this, and I don't know if you notice, just there, you can go up the street and say, "Wow", at all these buildings that are being done, but that facade, that middle building up at the odd house, that red, and they're not finished, they have one more building to put up there, and that's it. And I'll join you, and congratulations to the Catoctin Mount grads, it's well done. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you want to add anything? Or just, first of all, welcomes, or?
Super quick, thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I'll explain my late arrival. My oldest, she is graduating from college, thank goodness, in a matter of 20 days, and this evening, we got to attend an award ceremony where she received not one, but two awards from the university, so we're pretty happy about that, so. That was in Baltimore, it was nice to, nice to be there, but also it's good to be back. We had a trail day on Sunday, and though you might think we were there with paddles and canoes, we actually got a lot done. We were actually able to address some drainage issues on the trail, and nothing better than that on a rainy day. We had people from Reisterstown, people from Frederick City, and local folks as well. I found out something really neat, REI, Recreational Equipment International, the multi-billion dollar company, they're rolling out a trail program on June 30th here. They're doing it with the youth program, and they're doing it with Emmitsburg Trails, and this is the first time they're rolling it out, and my understanding is nationwide, and Maryland's the first state to do it, so they're doing it with us, which is very exciting. Beyond that, I was also able to attend the Seaton Center's 50th anniversary, a very impressive event, very well attended, and Mr. Mayor, I'm afraid I did miss your remarks, I did get there late also, so I'm sorry. Okay, but beyond that, thank you for the opportunity, and Mr. President, pro tem, I will do everything in my power to help you tonight in the process.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sir.
I did get your email, and I wanted you to know that I will do everything I can.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm going to get really good there. All right, moving on to public comments, I'm sorry, actually, okay, we have two bills on. Conrad Weaver, do you want to wait till number two, we get to the, actually talk about the showing in the movie? Okay, all right. And we have a visitor tonight, Brendan Mahoney from Senator Huff's office, sir?
Absolutely.
Give your comments. If you would, just come up to the mic, introduce yourself and where you live.
I'm Brendan Mahoney, I live in Frederick, but happy to be up here, I'm a legislative aide with Senator Huff. We just wanted to let everyone know that we're available for any constituent issues that we can help resolve with the state, or any things we can try to help facilitate, as well as for the town, anything coordination with the state, or any grants you guys are thinking about applying for, that you'd like a little extra help on, or a letter of recommendation or anything like that, we'd be happy to do that for you. And thank you very much.
One item here, Commissioner Buckman, happy out. The Community Day, what is the date of that, June?
29th.
29th. Just an open invitation to Senator Huff to come up to our Community Day?
I'll be sure to put on his calendar, and I'll let him know.
Do you have a parade and everything else?
The parade.
Riding convertible? All right, there you go, June 29th, you said?
June 29th, yes.
I'll put that down. Thank you very much.
All right, fantastic.
Sir, also, thank you, is that all right?
Yeah.
On the 29th, we're going to have a lot more pedestrian and cycling traffic.
Okay.
If we could maybe get something from the state for signage, maybe?
Things like that.
State highway trailers, you know, advising people?
Yeah, absolutely, possibly. Do you mind, should you send us an email with all that information?
Absolutely.
See if there's something we can do to help you out with that?
Passes down.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, administrative business, we have none tonight. Consent agenda, we have none tonight. Treasurer's report.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, sir. Town of Emmitsburg cash activity as of April 30th, 2019, our cash balance on April 1st, 2019 is $5,324,604. On deposit, we had $350,399, withdrawals in the amount of $195,944. Our operating balance forward is $5,479,059, and listed are the top 10 checks for your consideration and review.
Any questions for the treasurer?
I have a question.
Oh, go for it.
Are both solar fields offline?
No.
So they, just once, okay, so there's still one online. Number two's still off, but one is online.
What, number one is online.
So it was less than the 7533.
Either that or the timing, it just didn't, I think your last, or April 1st meeting, you had two months' worth of UGI bills, and that's probably why you're not seeing one on this one.
Yes.
It's the timing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? Report stands. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the planning commission report, we're in two hours tonight. We did not have a meeting this, last month, but we are having a meeting this month on Tuesday, May 21st, correct? I do believe it was stated there. I'm sorry, no, 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 May 28th, May 28th, my fault, that's the wrong meeting. Got it, okay. All right, moving on to the agenda items. All right, the first item on our list is approval of the fiscal year Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract for consideration. I do believe we have a separate document for that, that everyone should have got on their desk.
Yes, good evening. This is the yearly contract from the Frederick County Sheriff's Office for contractual services of two deputies provided by Frederick County. The contract itself, the language is exactly the same, the only things that have changed are the dates of service, July 1st, 2019, to June 30th of 2020, and then the contractual cost for FY 2020 increased to $28,624. It's a 2.89% increase, which equals about $8,221 more than FY 2019, and the reason is due to salary merit increases and some changes in the fringe costs.
Okay. Questions for staff? No?
I don't have any on this, no.
We're all good? All right.
Mr. Mayor? Just in your view, you're satisfied with the service we've received from the deputies? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely, very, very commendable.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions, do we have a motion for this item?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept the fiscal year 2020 Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for the zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent. All right, agenda item number two, sponsorship of Catoctin High School showing of heroin's grip movie for consideration. Staff?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, I'm going to use money in my discretionary fund to pay for this $250, so it's not really an agenda item, but it, is this a good dollars, so it's not really an agenda item, but it is just a good cue for Conrad.
Okay.
It's your presentation at Catoctin High School, we are going to donate, we, I've already talked to Mayor Canarin and we're going to split the cost of the town of Emmitsburg with the town of Thurmond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's wonderful.
Mr. Weaver, would you like to come up and speak on that?
Hi, Conrad Weaver, resident right here in Southgate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, for being a part of this project in sponsoring the screening at Catoctin High School. We as a community, as we all know, have been hit severely, really severely with the opioid epidemic and two and a half years ago, I started, I embarked on a project to tell that story and I spent two years hanging out with people that I never thought I'd hang out with and it changed me. And this film is impacting people all across our region, all across our community and very soon, all across our country. And we are in the process of booking events as far away as Texas, actually as far away as England. People in the UK have asked for this film, we are going to be, we are an official nominee or an official entrant in the New Jersey Recovery Film Festival, the first of June and the film is also going to be brought across the country nationwide via Amazon later this year. And so bringing it here locally to our northern Frederick County, I think has always been important to me because of all the loss we've had in our community, of the members of our of our public who have lost their loved ones and those who are still out there fighting the fight. And we as a community need to come together to fight that fight. When I first started on this project, I was one of those people who said, it's their problem, how hard can it be, just quit. Well, after spending two years hanging out with these people and learning about what they're going through, I now realize that it's not their problem, it's our problem and we as a community must come together to solve this. And this film helps describe that and it helps the layperson like me understand addiction, understand this problem in a much deeper way. Recently, we had a screening in Frederick and a Frederick County medic attended the screening and I had actually interviewed him for the film and he didn't, for some reason or other, didn't make it into the film, but he came to the event and after he watched the film, he said, you know, I used to get upset, even angry, when we'd roll up on an overdose and once again, there was this kid that we just treated last week and I'd get frustrated and angry, but after seeing your film, he said, I will never again roll up on someone and not ask whose family this person belongs to. And that's the whole point of the film. Our friends and our neighbors who are overdosing are family members, they're our loved ones, there are people in our community who have family who people love and we need to rise up together as a community and help them and this film helps do that. Following the film at Catoctin on May twenty-first, we will have a panel of experts, I'm not a subject matter expert, I'm a filmmaker, but we will have a panel of experts, including members of law enforcement, people from the health department, we will have a person who is in recovery and a family member who lost their loved one on the panel to bring about a discussion of this issue for our northern Frederick County community. And so I invite everyone to attend, it's free, Catoctin High School, May twenty-first, seven PM, at the high school, I will be there and we will have a group, a great group of people there with resources to provide to the community for those people who are struggling with addiction. So thank you for, thank you very much for letting me share, thank you for supporting this and being a part of this project.
Have they thought about showing it while students are there?
We are actually in, we are working right now with Frederick County Public Schools who are, they have a curriculum team who is actually writing curriculum based on the film and they are taking segments of the film and creating curriculum that's going to be used in health classes this coming school year.
Nice.
And once that kind of goes through the process and gets, gets kind of all the kinks worked out of it, then we're going to offer that curriculum from Frederick County, it's going to be offered nationwide, so that school districts all across the country can have access to the film and to the resources provided by the school district here in Frederick County. We've already had one screening in a school, in Brunswick High School, earlier this year and we hope to have additional events in high schools at assemblies throughout the county as we move forward.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Making it done.
Any other comments or questions?
Just thank you.
Okay. And if I understand this correctly, Mayor, this is going to be a donation from yourself?
Yes.
Or from your discretionary fund?
Yes, I am. Thank you Conrad for everything, you've represented our community so well, we'll be there to support you. Thank you, it was a wonderful effort.
Thank you very much.
Based on the fact that this is being the mayor's discretionary fund, I'm not sure this is actually something we need to vote on, but I would just like to state support for this. I do feel that's very important, I just attended myself Narcon classes about two weeks ago and how to administer this in the case of overdoses, so I understand how important this is in the community and I've seen my share of students unfortunately fall into a grip of this over the last twenty years, so it's comments I'd like to make on that. All right, moving on.
Mr. Blanchard, would it be fair to say the board universally supports the mayor in his?
I think so, yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Universally approve that.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving into item, agenda item number three, the fiscal year FY two thousand and twenty budget for discussion and possible consideration. Staff, you have anything to add to this? I know we already did a presentation, but anything else you want to add?
No, I'll turn a lot of this over to Mr. Tabler.
Okay.
There were some minor adjustments to it and Cole can explain that, that we did receive, after you received your initial budget packet, we did receive the announcement from the county on the tax equity, which ended up being higher than what we anticipated this year, it'll be four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and three dollars. So we did adjust some of the numbers that affected basically your capital funds transfers, what was left over in the general fund that needed to be moved over to Fund Two. We received, and Commissioner Blanchard let me know, I received nine questions from Commissioner Blanchard, I can go ahead and answer those now or we can, you want me to answer them now?
Well, I'd kind of like to let the other people go first, if anybody else has any questions and then they can come back to me.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you want to start?
I'm going to hold off for a moment.
What we, what we would like to do is, we do have a PowerPoint that goes over your entire budget.
Okay.
We can go through the general fund summaries, your revenues and then get into your general fund expenses. Once we finish that, I know Cole would like and I think it'd make it easier if we go department by department, any questions you might have related to each department and when we get to the end of that, then we can move on to our capital fund transfers, answer any questions there and then we'll move on to the business accounts, which are your water and sewer funds, go over the revenues, the expenses and then we do have some summaries of some of the projects the town completed this year with money that was budgeted, some of the events that we sponsored, not sponsored, but held throughout the year as well.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Just keep moving. All right, let's get moving. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, working with the mayor and the, and the town manager, we were here to go over the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. First, as Kathy was saying, start with some good news, we handed out updated sheets for your notebooks that we had handed out prior, if you could replace those pages that you had received. Also handed out a budget highlights that some of the numbers are updated to those new numbers that were handed out with the sheets, so we'll go over those also. The two major things, the two things that did change were the county tax equity, which went up by a little over eighteen thousand and we did get the final number on the law enforcement contract that we had discussed just a few minutes ago. Going to go through the budget notebook with the highlighting some of, some of the expenses and different things on the slide presentation. At the end of each of the, you know, as we go through each of the departments, at the end of the time that we look at each department, if you have any questions or at the end of the, as we go through each of the funds. I'll just go over a couple of the, I'll go over the financial budget summary just quickly once again, some of these have changed since the prior meeting. Again, the tax rate for real estate taxes to remain at current rate of thirty-six cents per hundred assessed, the state highway funds will be a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven eighty-two, higher than the previous fiscal year by about a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars. We did get our notice for the county tax equity funding, which the amount will be four hundred and forty thousand, six oh three. The service charge revenues that the town is budgeting is slightly up, up by six thousand dollars, going from two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred to two hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred. Budgeted general fund revenues will increase by ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars or five point four percent over last year. Water revenues are budgeted slightly lower this year at five hundred and fifty-five, eight hundred and ten dollars. Last year's budget was at five fifty-eight, five hundred. We've, over the past couple of years, we've seen slight decreases in some of the water and sewer revenues, just based on usage that the town as residents have used, so people trying to conserve water. Sewer revenues are budgeted slightly lower this year at a little over a million, at a million, sixty thousand, two fifty, whereas the fiscal year nineteen budget was a million, oh sixty-one, sixty-one thousand. In both areas of the water and sewer, the utility charges are slightly lower and the tap fees are slightly lower than budgeted last year and the area budgeted higher, that's been a big help the last couple of years, is that the interest rates are higher for our bank accounts, so you'll see that in some of the, on the line item. In the human resources, town management recommends that staff be given a step increase with a two percent cost of living adjustment. Total budgeted salaries for fiscal year twenty is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine fifty-four, up eleven thousand, six sixty-seven from the prior year of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, two eighty-seven. Overall, for salaries, it's a one point three five increase over last year's budgeted total. One of the things too, I wanted to highlight with the payroll items, as we look at each of the departments, you'll see that certain departments may be higher, actually, one is actually lower, but overall, I just wanted to go over a few of the numbers across the board, townwide. Like I was saying, the, the overall payroll for the year budgeted is up one point three five percent. Three of the line items have stayed the same from last year, state unemployment, workman's comp and pension are all budgeted across the board at the same amounts as they were last year, fiscal year nineteen. One of the things I want to highlight that's, that is good news is our health insurance that is budgeted from this year, from last year, actually has gone down eight point seven percent. Now, that goes to the fact that the certain coverages that the employees pick can have an effect on that, so just it worked out this year that it actually went down across the board by eighteen, about a little over eighteen thousand dollars, which is, which is good news. On the expensive side, expenses side of things, budgeted general fund expenses before capital funds transfer increased by eighty-two thousand, oh forty-one or five point one percent. Our final capital funds transfer amount is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one seventy-one, up from last year's two thirty-two, oh nineteen. And budgeted water expenses actually decreased by a little over five thousand or one percent. Sewer fund expenses increased by nine thousand, nine fifty-eight or one percent also. The sewer fund cost went from seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six fifty-five to seven thirty-five, six thirteen. So we can start going through the PowerPoint and the different pages of the notebook, if you turn to page three.
Hmm? I did.
That's why I gave the clicker to Kathy. If you turn to page three, we can kind of look at the overall expenses, revenues and expenses.
There we go, there we go.
This is actually, if you look at the screen now, the, this is last year's budget of a million, eight thirty-two, oh thirty-nine, which is the, I guess, the third column on page three, which with all your different sections that make up your revenue under the general fund, the taxes, the license and permits, state revenue, county revenue, service charges and miscellaneous. For fiscal year twenty, a couple of the things I want to highlight, your, your biggest section of general fund revenue are your taxes and we have that as increasing by three percent. That is due to higher budgeted amounts for real estate tax and the local tax is, is higher also on that. Other things I want to point out is on state revenue, state revenue across the board is up by twenty-three percent and that's mainly due to the state highway use funds that are increasing by twenty-six thousand, seven hundred. Service charges also have increased by six thousand, that's mainly permit fees and pool revenues are slightly budgeted higher this year. And under miscellaneous revenue of sixty-six thousand, oh fifty-seven, increases are seen in the rents that are of some of the locations here in town and also the interest amounts that we're receiving on our bank accounts, which is the interest rates have gone up in recent years. As you can see from the slide, from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty, we're budgeting a higher amount of real estate taxes to come in, we get notice from the county what the assessment is on the properties within town, so the thirty-six cents rate that we have has allowed us to budget higher amounts this year.
It's kind of the same, right?
Yeah, this is basically showing the same thing where you can see that general fund revenue for the past several years has been pretty steady, but you do see an increase, a slight increase from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty. This kind of, this gives you an overall picture, this actually shows the, the revenue and expenses and the difference between the revenue and expenses is the amount of capital inter-fund transfer that we move from Fund One to Fund Two, so you can see that there's a, there's a gap in between those two numbers that we can transfer and designate in the capital projects fund. Under general fund expenses, if you go back to page three, it gives you a summary of each of the departments and we'll get into a little bit further detail for that. Does, in this general fund, the, the general fund revenues?
Is that what you're asking?
Okay, we'll go on, nevermind, we'll move on to the expenses. This is fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget, a total amount of a million, eight thirty-two, oh thirty-nine, which matched the revenues last year. Go ahead, Kathy. And this slide also gives the, matches up with page three, which gives you the summary of the general fund expenses for fiscal year twenty proposed budget.
So this basically shows you in your general fund where, of an overall budget of one point nine million, where the money's allocated in your budget throughout the different departments, just kind of like a visual reference. What we'd like to do and if the board isn't opposed, if anybody's had any time, we can go through each line item in Department Ten or we could just address questions that you may have on particular line items in Department Ten, it's how the board would like to see the information.
If we, if we could, we might want to step back and just look at the individual line items under revenue? items under revenue.
Were there any questions on the revenues? I'm sorry, Cole.
That's okay.
That we went through, the...
I didn't have any. As you look at page five and six, with the different sections of revenue...
I actually had a couple of questions, but I'll, this question on the board first. Do you guys have anything first you want to do? Okay. On page five, these are the questions I actually submitted to you, Kathy. On line item number 4041, trader's license, I wasn't really sure what was going on with that.
That's basically your business licenses in town. It's the money that we receive from Frederick County, that they receive from the businesses.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
And then I had another question, kind of basically, you already explained already, was the county tax equity. You know, you said it was more this time, but I wasn't really sure. What's the determining factor on that? How does that go about?
It's essentially, they have, they, they send a handout that goes over the different formulas, but there's different areas that they look at. One is the amount of streets that you may have in town, that you maintain, the amount of parks, acreage. Let me see, the, where was that at? There was, there was about, there was four categories that they, 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 they come up with an equation that give you your specific amount for each town.
Okay.
And I have a handout I can, I can pass along.
All right, I wouldn't mind seeing it.
Go through that, yeah.
All right, thanks. And I just had questions on page six concerning the pool, under pool memberships and pool admissions.
Right, that's, last year, since last year was the first year the, the new pool was open, we were unsure of what volume we would have as far as season memberships and daily memberships. We saw a very great increase on membership, or memberships and then daily admissions last full year, so we were able to budget more, put more into the budget this year than anticipated last fiscal year.
Okay.
And we took those numbers based off what we did last year.
All right, I'll put this back to the board. Other questions on page five and six?
One item.
Okay, go for it.
I'm, I'm looking at page six. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right numbers for the new page versus the old page. And, yep, the numbers are the same. Okay. So I'm looking at line...
Mr. Mayor.
Gosh.
Well, heights.
Yeah. Miscellaneous revenue, Department 7, am I saying that correctly? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm looking at the Crep Scott Road Farm piece. We have the rental there.
Yes.
And we had assigned that rental in a, in a vote from a prior board, the maintenance of the barn. Now, the barn is gone.
Right.
I'm wondering where is that money being applied? If, if we could find that out. I know you don't know that now, I don't expect you to know that now, but if we could...
Do you remember what year that was? I'd like to look it up, and maybe it had a specific line item that we could attach it to, that maybe not, you know, obviously, we don't have Scott Road Barn anymore. Just approximate year.
I, I would want to say it's one of the last three years that Commissioner Steger sat as president of the board.
Okay.
So I know that doesn't narrow it down year-wise, but framing it wise, sorry. That was, that was one item, and then, going to page five, Department 4, intergovernment, state, related to income. And I want to compare five and six, so I'm in the right spot, I'm sorry.
Which one? I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, sure. Page five, Department 4, intergovernment. And there's grant funding that we did have in 19, in our last budget, that we no longer have. And was that related to, well, what is that related to? I'll, I'll leave it up there.
We had, we had gotten notice for fiscal year 19, that prior to this year for the state highway use tax, where you can see that's increased a good bit from 19, they had a one-time grant that the state of Maryland had. And when you take the state highway use tax and that one-time grant, that's the difference that we were talking about, as far as the difference from last year, and the amount of funds for the state highway. So that was a one-time grant.
So we lost the one-time grant, because it's one-time, but we have a much better...
We made up for it on the, the other line item.
Correct. So I think that's an outcome of, of the MML campaign, when we visited the state house.
Yeah, I think so.
So that was a good thing, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board concerning revenues? All right. You want to move on to expenses?
We'll move, if we can move on to page eight.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I guess we just keep it off of them.
We do have, I think, one or two slides related to Department 10, which is your legislative and your legislative executive department. Got one, if it comes up while that's loading. Does anybody have any items, line items you want us to go over in particular in Department 10?
I actually have two, if you don't mind, folks. I have one on 5311, advertising.
Yes, I have your answer on that one.
Okay, go ahead.
5311, Department 10 for advertising, it's broken out into a couple of line items. We do $650 for elections.
Okay.
That we promote, we use for advertising elections, advertising election judges, and then 600 is for general, any public hearings that we have to advertise, anything rated to the, or related to the executive or the town itself gets coded there.
And I just had one more on concerning 6901, special events and program costs.
I actually have a slide on that.
Okay.
So 6901 is your, if I find my page, your special events and program costs, budgeted for fiscal year 2019, we budgeted 22,800. This year, it's up slightly to 25,665. In response to the Christmas decorations that we put it, put on the square this past Christmas, we wanted to expand and go further out, adding more of the snowflake and pool decorations that everybody likes, we budgeted $10,000 for that. There's $1,600 in general for basically miscellaneous events, $400 to continue the composting program. We have 2,000 to spend on Shred Day, which is going to be held on, this year, it's held on Community Day. There'll be electronic as well as paper shred. There's 1,565 designated to National Night Out. The Sheriff's Office is hosting its national campaign. Their big event will be here in the town of Emmitsburg on August 6th, at the back of the community center. There's $100 from MHA ribbon cutting for the wayside signs, and then our contribution to the Boys and Girls Club is $10,000. And that's what makes up your special events and programs.
Thank you, appreciate that. Questions on the board?
Just for clarification, the composting, sorry, composting program. What is our program?
We have the bins, as you can see right there, which we purchased at a discounted rate, and we then in turn sell them to residents as well as promoting education on the benefits of composting.
So we have these, these are purchased. We have literature already, or will we be purchasing more?
Yes, we want to continue the campaign. We had initial literature when we began the program last year. We want to come out with some new literature. We also put it out at Heritage Community Heritage Day. We'll have bins and additional brochures and information.
Great, okay, thank you.
Moving on to page nine, under Department 12, planning and zoning. This is actually one of the departments that have, that has went down slightly from last year's proposed budget. As you, as you look at Department 12, does anybody have any questions concerning those line items?
I have one. Item 5601, the forestry, is that the tree cutting that we're...
That's actu, it's actually going to be for, it is not actually the tree cutting, it is for any forest conservation reviews that we have in the future. Anytime somebody submits a large for, site plan, there may be requirements to submit a forest conservation plan. We'll need funding to review those plans, as well as to put out any requests for proposals or advertising for additional select harvests, if we'd like to do that in the future. If we're going to promote the firewood policy, we'd like to advertise that as well. So it's just for a little bit of future money for forestry.
Okay.
Would that, I'm sorry, question?
No, good.
Would that anticipated growth on the east side of 15, then?
No, that's, that's, that's not what this is.
Okay.
This, the...
I know there's a lot of trees there in that area.
That site plan over there, we don't have to do the forest conservation review, the, the county will do it, so we don't have to pay for that one. But there are future things that could be developing in town that we might need it for.
Okay.
Other questions in Department 12?
Well, I was sort of wondering why the educational conference workshop jumped a little under $4,000.
The biggest jump in that is, we're sending Zach to a GIS course, to become more familiar and more prom, we'd like to get him more involved with GIS, and like to eventually have them here at the meetings that we can then put it up on.
What's GIS?
Geographical information system. It's basically the matting and plotting of, right now, we've done our water and sewer system, it's the streets, residents, it's all land-based mapping, essentially.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to Department 13, financial.
All right, any questions in Department 13, that would be your financial?
I had one. It was line item 5310, bad debt expense.
Yeah. That line item is, as we're getting towards the end of the year, as part of the audit process, we take a look at our outstanding balances from the town, from town businesses that get billed for their personal property tax. If a, if a business, if we know that a business is out of business, and we don't anticipate receiving prior billings, then this is where we would book the bad debt expense for that.
Okay. Fair enough. Board, questions for Department 13? No? Okay, moving on.
Moving on to Department 15, buildings.
That's the next one.
Mr. Ritz?
No, I was clearing my throat. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right, no problem, no problem.
I have another thing.
I'll add, I'll just make a note, for capital outlay, there's $1,600 being added there. We'd like to put a drop box to the rear of this building to help people pay their bills or drop off reservation requests, or drop anything that they want for the town office after hours. Sometimes it's not convenient to go up to 22 East Main Street, they can't get here before the office closes. So part of that is going to be to put a drop box here. Once we do that, if it's approved, then we'll have to come back with some ordinances just to add that to our, our code.
One thing I'd like to point out, line item 5201, which is the health insurance, this is just an example of the, the amount going down from the prior year, and that's just due to coverages for a particular employee. So you can see that, that can vary greatly depending on the circumstances of the coverages.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Go for it.
Just kind of comes to mind now. I'm looking at the second to last line, 6200, repairs and maintenance of buildings, $39,550.
Yes.
What are we looking at for repairs? It's like the, we have the new shed, I believe.
Oh, your buildings. This would actually be for our buildings. So it's 25,500 for repairs and maintenance of 300A, South Seton. You have 25, well, 2,550 for 22 East Main Street. You have 1,000 for the maintenance garage, 4,000 for 303 West Lincoln, 5,000 for 140 South Seton, 500 contingency, and 1,000 general. It's basically just to make what it takes to repair and maintain our town-owned buildings.
Any roofs, any major capital expenses related to this, or infrastructure?
I have a few in Fund II, but not, not in Fund I.
Okay.
Any other questions, Joe?
Is this 300A?
Yes.
Is it county-owned?
Correct. We lease this building for $1 a year, and we're responsible for a majority of the repairs and maintenance per a contract that was signed.
I wonder why I didn't know that.
Many moons ago.
All right, thank you.
Just a little heads up, we are going to be in negotiations with the county to hopefully have the county take over all the repairs and maintenance, and possibly come back with a, a lease then. But as of now, that's how we're going to continue to operate.
Okay.
Nice.
The main cost of the 25,000 is HVAC system.
Nice, nice.
Will anything be replaced, or is it just the actual maintenance of, like, annual repair?
The town is responsible for all repairs, and in that comes some costly items like compressors for the HVAC system, and then the routine maintenance for all the HVAC is the town's responsibility. That makes up a large chunk of the 25,000. We've tried to get out of that, and we can't.
Okay, any other questions with 15? Nope. All right, moving on. Page 12.
12, you have your public safety, and there's just a quick chart we put up there, just in, Cole already spoke about it, and I mentioned it, the, the increase to the public safety contract, the 2.89% increase. That's your largest line item in Department 20. You have just some smaller items that go along with it. Then Department 21, your donations for public safety and fire and rescue that we make yearly. And then Department 22 is your siren maintenance contract of 6,170. Any questions on those? I'm sorry.
So if I'm reading this correctly, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. Donald, no problem.
Sorry. I don't mean to jump. Thank you, sir. If I'm reading this correctly, then based on the new numbers, we're saving $11,000 versus what we had been doing approximately. Have you come forward with any suggestions in applying that $11,000?
Yeah, you'll see that in your budget transfers for the capital fund.
Okay.
So that cha, basically changed your overall amount. You balance that out with the change in the tax equity. I, I think the change was, what, 18,000?
Twenty-five in total.
Twenty-five in total.
So Mr. Ritz will get you Van Halen in the park yet.
Nice, I'm all about that.
We're not on 60 yet.
Okay. Just making sure.
Okay. Any other questions on page 12? Nope.
Not Hager.
All right. Moving forward, page 13, Public Works Streets.
We do have a few slides on Public Works. One thing that I wanted to mention, in contractual for streets, contractual makes up, why can I find it? Here we go. Snow removal, the base is 7,000, and then 600 makes up the allocation for human resources. Snow, related to snow removal, this year, we contracted for, because our prior contractor was not doing it anymore, for sidewalks, and then also help with trucks and plowing and such during snow events. Next year, next fiscal year 2020, we're going to do snow removal using staff. The cost was very high for just having the sidewalks done. It was comparable to having streets plowed and trucks and equipment from another contractor. So the Public Works staff brought it to me that they would like to take this on themselves. So...
That's when we got that ATV, or whatever that...
That's part of why we got that as well. That's why we're replacing the dump truck, so we can continue to plow. So we're going to budget 12,000 for snow removal this year, or for fiscal year 2020. In 2019, we've spent 13,953. So hopefully, if we remove the one contractor from doing sidewalks, we might be able to reduce our costs, but unfortunately, you just never know on the weather and what kind of snow we're going to get. So that's what makes up contractual. So contractual's 19,000. So contractual is $19,600. Other expenses in Public Works, you have, you have $100 for meter repair, you have $1,500 for storm drain inlets, $600 for safety, $500 for general, or actually, it's more than 500 for general. Can't see that far. It's $1485 for general. My notes are wrong.
Right.
And $600 for safety. So other expenses is about $3,600, $3,700.
Commissioner Donald, do you have a question?
So backing up to the snow thing, will we contract to have a reserve resource with a private company should there be a need, like for example, an especially heavy storm? Or does town staff feel that they're good to go regarding any type of weather we're looking at?
Correct. We'll probably, we'll meet on it, you know, as we get closer to winter. But right now, staff feels fairly confident that they can handle, because there's not that many sidewalks that town staff is responsible for. You have the sidewalks here, you have the East Lincoln walkway, I think you have a portion of West Lincoln, but the majority of the sidewalks in town are either residential or commercial or institutional that are required to do them.
Will this include the loop in community park, the blacktop? I've been approached a few times about that being cleared during the cold weather.
That, it does get cleared, but it is on the priority list. It's not up there.
Sure.
But it will get cleared.
Great.
That's something that staff's responsible for anyway.
Okay. And changing gears, as Mr. Sweeney is not here, I'm looking at the streetlights upkeep.
Right.
My assumption is that is separate from purchasing and wiring new streetlights in the gap on Main Street near, for example, Harrington's and the areas where Mr. Sweeney has expressed a concern that we'll have a gap in our lighting. This is related to?
Well, one, there's...
Separate, correct?
That's separate. That is just replacement of streetlights in town that would fail or damaged by accidents. Just a little note on that. State Highway is not putting streetlights on the new sidewalk. Staff has met, and the cost to run conduit and streetlights from there down to Jubilee is extraordinary, trying to run conduit through water. And so we're going to reach out to Potomac Edison to see what they may be able to offer as far as possibly attaching LED lights to some of their poles to brighten the area. So we are working on it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that Mr. Sweeney's voice echoes somewhere, you know? Thank you.
I was going to say something, but the timing is probably off. A lot of residents have expressed a desire to have the streetlights change from this bright white, which causes a lot of glare, to more of a yellow, which would reduce that.
Well, what's in there now are the LED lights, which the town purchased, I think it was prior to, I think it was in 2012, 2013, that reduced the electric or energy costs exponentially. I know there's a desire to update our streetlights. That is something that's going to have to be done through grant funding, and staff has been keeping its eye out for grant funding. If that, if we do find grant funding, that is something we'd like to produce, pursue.
How are they thinking about updating the lights?
New streetlight, new lamp posts, new...
Bulbs.
Covers, bulbs, but it's something that has to be done through a grant.
I think you could still get the really decent energy-saving LEDs that are more of, more of a warmer...
Yeah. You still, yeah, it's very costly.
Well, just as we switch bulbs, as they naturally go out, to start replacing, right?
I think that would look...
There's another way you can do it, which is...
Yeah, I think they're expensive regardless.
If this is your housing, you could put a colored filter in there, and that would do the same thing, and that might be a much less expensive fix than changing the bulbs. Now, if you want to change the whole aesthetic, a different street post lamp, that's something.
I'd like the aesthetic, if it wasn't so bright white.
Right. But there might be, I mean, when we go to MML, we should talk to our vendors and find out.
What's an appropriate filter that can knock down the glare?
Because I've heard the same complaint, too.
Fair enough.
I think I did this one.
Any other questions?
Oh, I don't know if I have. And just real quick, this slide of what makes up your operating supplies, as you can see, roughly about $10,000. It's just all about $1,000 on the supplies that the Public Works staff needs basically to maintain the streets and some other things. Your equipment, your parking enforcement, your meters, your tickets, salt tools called mixed signs, paint, stone, and then just general.
There's one more.
There is one more, thank you. And then finally, for streets, you have what makes up your repairs and maintenance, are your sidewalks, your parking enforcement, contingency, and then general funds for about $4,000, a little under $4,000, $3,900. Any questions?
No, I just have a question on Department 31 once we get there.
Okay.
Yep. If you turn to page 14, it's Department 31 Refuge. You'll see that the, there's a increase in that department mainly due to the contractual costs that we've been finding from the last, from activity for the prior year or so. We've, I believe, what has caused us to raise the budgets, the tipping fees have ended up being higher than we anticipated.
Okay.
So that's, that's the key pace with those quarterly fees, or those monthly fees that we get concerning tipping.
So basically, the tonnage is going up that the trash companies taking to the landfill. People are throwing out more trash. We did explore, and I know that I mentioned, curbside yard waste recycling, yard waste curbside, because there's been studies and at MML conferences that the yard waste that people are putting in their trash is increased tonnage, that's causing the tipping fees to come up. Unfortunately, it wasn't in what I believe the town financially could afford at this point. It was worth it to continue this way. We're going to continue to explore ways that we could possibly encourage people to use the yard waste and encourage people to recycle to hopefully reduce the tonnage that is going into the landfill, because that's directly related to the bills that they receive quarterly. But that's where the largest jump you're going to see is in the increase in tipping fees, and that's something that we can't control.
I would be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Duncan.
I would, as just a resident, I don't even have a truck, I would be willing to, if we had a contract, pay to have a curbside yard waste pickup.
It was, yes. I would like to proceed, pursue that, and we're going to look at some other options. The initial quote we received was very high, so we're going to maybe look at reducing maybe the number of days, number of weeks, only limit it to certain months.
Right.
So we're going to continue to look at options to encourage people to recycle the yard waste or have it picked up curbside instead of putting in their routine trash.
Have we seen any change, I'm sorry.
No.
Have we seen any change in the quantity that we're recycling? Has it, has it reduced?
We don't typically see it, because the county does the recycling, so we don't know the tonnage that the county's picking up through town. At our plant, at our wastewater treatment plant where we have Frederick County recycling dumpster, I don't know, do you have those numbers? I don't know that we have those numbers, but it's remained consistent. I don't think we've seen really any up or down changes to the recycling. I know they don't come and have to empty, they don't have to empty it very often, so I don't know that it's being used to its full potential.
Yeah, that's, I, I mean, my understanding was, we saw a decrease in the quantity recycled by household at the curbside pickup, and maybe that needs to be verified. I mean, I would ask if we could verify that. The reason being is, my understanding was in, and I'm afraid I can't source this, but my understanding was from some authority, that we were seeing fewer people, sorry, we were seeing fewer items recycled, and as a result, recycled materials were going into our trash stream, and as a result of that, that was in part driving up our cost for our tipping.
Right, and I don't know that you could even, I don't know how you verify that, if everybody's throwing their recycling in trash bags and they're coming to pick it up, but I have heard that. I've heard people talk about the decline in recycling and the decline in the yard waste that is causing the tipping fees to come up. That was something that was, that was really talked about at the fall MML conference, and so we're not the only municipality that's looking for solutions. So I know staff, and we're open to any suggestions that people may have.
So with the tipping fee increase that we're seeing, that we're budgeting for 2020, do we anticipate a, an increase per household for their expense related to garbage?
Correct. If you, if you are not participating in recycling and you're disposing of your yard waste, you're leading to the increased tonnage, which then drives your bill up as well as everybody else's.
Okay.
So hopefully, we as good citizens can encourage each other to recycle and to dispose of it properly.
Thank you.
Something Mr. Mayor is very passionate about.
Very, thank you very much. I served on the Solid Waste Steering Committee for the county, County Executive Gardener Boarding, a group of, and the biggest thing we can really move is organics. If we can get people to compost, our, the life expectancy of our landfill is probably in 2033, '35, and we can extend that out if we can get rid of the organics, which are about 19%. And also encourage people to recycle, but we're single-stream recycling. That means it goes, everything goes in it, and if there's any food waste or any contamination in this clump of trash that goes through there, they push it all back into our stream. So you have to, you really have to have a clean waste of recyclables. It just can't be dirty and soda pop stuff, any stuff like that, but it's worth that. I know we're shipping to Pennsylvania and West Virginia a little bit, but that could change. It's changing around the world, where they used to take trash to India, no more.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's just changing everywhere, so anything we can do to encourage organic, that stream, get it out, and again, it's 19%, and that would be helpful. Thanks, sir.
No problem. Commissioner Ritz, did you have something?
No, I had no questions or concerns, but it just got me to thinking, when is our contract up for our current trash collector?
It's a three-year contract, and we just approved it, I believe it was last year.
Was it last year?
Yes.
I get my timeframes mixed up.
Yeah, we approved it about this time last year, right before we did the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Blant, you're welcome.
Yeah, I had one question on 5306, printing.
I spoke to Cole about that, and I think you had the answer for that one.
Basically, we just, we found that there's not, there hasn't been a lot of activity. That's, we could reduce that based on the fact that on occasion, we have to re, we have to have the bills done again, and a portion of that, predict of the bills for the actual water and sewer bills gets placed to this account. So we have just found that the activity's been low over the, over the past few years, so we could reduce that line item.
Okay.
Yeah, and we probably, for FY19, we budgeted too high, historically looking at numbers.
All right, can I ask it? Any other questions on Department 31? Just moving on to Department number 60, page 15. I'll start if you don't mind. I had a question on...
My one question, one of my biggies was one of yours, so.
Okay, 6901, special events and program costs. Is that the increase in the concerts?
Yeah, I have a, I have a slide on that, if you want.
Okay.
You want to get through what I'm...
Not all me.
All right.
All right, I'll jump back to the other ones after I answer this. So if you look at special events and programs costs, let me get to the right page, you'll see an increase from $4,400 to $9,500. A lot of things make up special events and programs. You have your $600 for farmers markets. We budget $7,100 for community concerts and functions. $2,000 of that is for concerts. $300 is going to be for the tree plaque, which was the tree plaque for, Matty?
Three hundred.
What was it for?
Oh, the first Arbor Day tree.
Okay. We wanted to do a plaque for the very first Arbor Day tree that was planted, $500 of it for the turkey trot, $850 for Arbor Day, and in line with all our other sustainable programs, $3,500 for rain barrels. We are in the process, I believe, town planner is looking for a grant to offset that cost. Rain barrels, if we, we submitted for a community garden grant, and one of the things we want to put over there is a rain barrel, so there'd be fresh water at the community garden. What else? $100 towards the community garden, $1,200 for pool parties, and $500 for general, and that's what makes up your special events and program costs.
Mr. Blanchard?
Sure, Commissioner Donald.
Didn't we have barrels at the shelter, at the pavilion?
Yeah.
Are those done now? Or are you trying, I mean, how would you source the rainwater? Not to be a goofball, but are we going to have some, like stand, like bulletin board type thing and draw water off that, or?
The particulars I'm not aware of right now.
Okay.
It was something that the town planner and town clerk have brought to me, and I think it's a great idea to keep moving forward.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We'll get credits for sustainable, the logistics of it, they have not presented that to me yet.
Okay.
They're in process of writing the grant, and this is just either if there's a match or to help offset some of the cost.
Okay, it just, we do have some barrels there, or we did have some barrels there.
Yes.
And I'm intrigued by the idea.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I can go back, can I go back?
Sure, go for it.
Thank you. One too many. In, I'd just like to go over some of the areas that there's a lot of line items that make it up, so you have an idea of what makes up that number. For your operating supplies in the parks, a total of $3,500. $1,000 of that is for the pools, $500 for park buildings, $500 for the dog park, $1,000 for new program open space signs. We're a little behind each year that you get a program open space grant. You're supposed to install a sign at or near where the funds went. We're a little behind, and the last item was just general, it's about $500 in general. Your repairs and maintenance in parks, there's a lot of things that make up this. $500 for the grounds, $1,200 for equipment, $3,000 at the, or $3,600 at the pool, $1,500 for the park buildings, $4,000 for the ball fields, that's your ball field mix and other supplies, $2,500 at the playground, $500 for the dog park, $1,000 contingency, $1,000 general, and $1,000 for the ash tree treatments. That's the bore treatments that we did through DNR last year, they recommend that we do them yearly. So your total for repairs and maintenance is $16,800. And that's everything in 60.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I had a question regarding the ball fields. I can't remember, I know the one organization that uses, Mid-Maryland uses our facilities. Do we get any money from them for using the field, for like the upkeep? I know they take care of it a little bit, but...
They actually maintain the fields, they, for at least two of the fields, they provided their own ball field mix.
Okay.
They pay, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the annual fee is, but they pay per field, per season, for just practice.
Okay.
And then they also pay per tournament, and they've actually had several tournaments. So off the top of my head, I think we've, we've brought in about $1,500 between all the, there's another club that is using one of the fields as well.
Okay.
So we are getting some money back towards the upkeep of the fields.
So the $4,000 expense is anticipated for those fields not being used by said organizations?
Right, and they're just, they're, we're required to, per the equipment, to get the fields ready to go for the season.
Yes.
That's what we, and then after that, whichever club or organization is using the field, is required then to maintain it throughout the season, drag it, make any necessary repairs. It's also for your dugouts and your fencing, any of the bleachers, to get those up and running.
I don't know if my memory is wrong, but I thought that the big sell for Mid-Maryland is that they were going to maintain and improve our ball fields.
Which they have, I don't know if you've gone back and looked at the Little League Field, the field behind this building is in excellent shape. They put in a large batting cage at the, or the Bay Bruce Field, not the Little League Field, the Bay Bruce Field back there. They are working with staff to repair some of the... repair some of the dugouts over in Memorial Park.
Commissioner Hocken, you have something else?
No, no, I was just saying, further on in the capital projects, there was more expense going to the ball fields also. So, I was just-
Yes.
I, I just had one more thing to say. Um, and I do apologize, I did not get you the information regarding the, the concerts. However, uh, your, your proposed budget of 2,000 is dead on. Um, it'll actually be a little bit less than that. And I do apologize to everybody. I know every year we try to have the concerts, uh, never really have a good turnout. I really got good turnout this year, anticipated, uh, performers. And if all goes well and the contracts come in and the performances go off, we'll actually, we'll be utilizing the, my, almost all of those funds this year. So, I know, I know every year we have some set aside. We don't use it.
Right.
So, um, I thought, you know, one last hurrah. Hopefully we'll go out with that.
Right. Uh, if you have concerts that are occurring before July 1, that money will-